At this time, we'll call the meeting in order. Roll call.
Roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present. Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Selby.
Present.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Mrs. Hickinbotham.
Present.
Mr. Kazook.
Present.
All board members present.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
The meeting agendas provided for your review, if there are no corrections or amendments, I recommend that the agenda be approved as presented. Of course, this is a special call board meeting, so we cannot add anything to the agenda, but I don't have anything recommended to strike either, so.
Second, president. Vote.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Selby.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hickinbotham.
Yes.
Mr. Kazook.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public comments, and I know we have a bunch of band members present that want to talk. Anybody want to speak?
I just, I'm going to speak on behalf of all students here. We know what's being discussed tonight here at this meeting, and just the fact that it will be being discussed, we would also like to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, it's good to see you all here, I'll say that. And we're so proud of our band, and just the legacy. I had two sisters, they were in it years ago, and I've got five sisters, but two of them were in band. And they were in it when we went to state, and to this day, you know, once you're in band, you're always in band, right? And so I'll be at band competition, I'll send them video clips or updates, I've sent my sisters the drawings that Sherman Carter's came up with, or the renderings of this, so... And I know, parents and alumni, guardians, I'll address this to you all too. Thank you, because it is a huge undertaking for what you all do to make the band function the way it does. And the support that you all give is phenomenal, and this community support for the band is phenomenal. And I think, if I had to guess, the board's support that they'll demonstrate here in a few agenda items later is phenomenal. So we're really excited about this project, and I'll say this publicly too, Allison, I really appreciate you all, and Ben, and all the team that's been together with that, and meeting with Mr. Irvin, because it's not just something that the architects just drew up and threw at us and said, "Here you go." I think Mr. Irvin will attest to the fact that it's been a lot of input, and a lot of meetings, and some time, but it's something that is very feasible, it's very workable for the project, and so we're really, really excited about that. And it's not too far down on the agenda items, so.
Next item is presentation, Bluegrass Risk Management.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Mike Warters, I'm the Director of Membership Management for Bluegrass Risk Management. I have Justin Moore and David Kendrick, who are our Sure Partners agents that's going to serve the district here over the next year. We want to, first of all, thank you all for the time. We won't, we will be brief, but just wanted to take a few moments to come and answer any questions, and kind of give you a little background into the program that we have, and make sure that you know that we're here to serve you and the community and the school district for the next year, and hopefully become a long-term partnership. Just a little background, I was an educator for 29 years, the last 13 until this past year was the Superintendent of Lethal Independent Schools in Northern Kentucky. To let you know how this came about, for years, I think most of you, as board members, know that insurance rates continue to raise even though a lot of claims aren't going on in districts. What happened was, 26 districts came together with the Sure Partners group out of the Lexington and Covington office to create Bluegrass Risk Management. And what we did last year, we started with 26 districts, and moving into this next year, we're going to have 37 districts. So we've added 11 to our new group, and we're happy to have you all as part of that, 11 that was added. I'm going to let Justin and David talk more about the nuts and bolts, but just to let you know, when you hear Superintendent Ford talk about what he's doing with the band, he's like that with everything he does. We were very selective in who we were going to add, that's part of the group, is to make sure that we have districts that are very strong. We were at a point where we didn't know where we were going to add many more, and Superintendent Ford called, we had a really good discussion, and he was very, very, I guess he was very forceful and passionate about what he felt that Russell County schools should belong with this group. We went back to our leadership team, and then we started looking even deeper into Russell County, and found out how great of a district you all are, and that's what put you into our group, and allowed us to give you a quote, and I think one thing I would tell everybody from being a former superintendent is, David and Justin will explain this better, but this is an investment. What you all are doing is, you're investing in your own school district, because what we mean by that is, this past year, all of our districts had invested into this, we ended up with over a million dollar surplus in our district, in our program. So what that'll do, down the road, will allow the school districts within the Bluegrass Risk Management to decide how they're going to put that money back into school districts. So what you're doing now is going to be invested in the future, and hopefully we'll be able to give you better rates, we know we will, be able to give you better rates, and then four or five years down the road, when some of this money matures, you'll be able to sit, Superintendent Ford or your representative will be a voting member to decide how some of that money gets reinvested back into the school district. So with that, I'm going to let David and Justin talk a little bit about the nuts and bolts, but know that any of the three of us would be more than willing to help or come to do anything you ever need from us. We don't like to get too much into the weeds, but Justin, you want to add anything? Yeah, just short and sweet, so again, thank you all for your business, and I can attest, I was down here on a July hot day, and I saw the band out here firsthand, practicing on the hot blacktop with their water bottles and taking...
Well, it's funny you bring that up, because Mr. Irvin is going to miss that part, the public display of the band's hard work, when they're behind the high school.
So I can, I saw that firsthand, so kudos to you all for that. But no, David and I, we got this bright idea several years ago, that, just to put in perspective what Russell County is, when we look at insurance policy, right, it's the premium paid in versus the losses paid out. And of all the 37 districts that we moved to our program, you all were the best when it came from losses paid out. You guys, over five years, had $80,000 in losses, and that's taken into account from educators' losses, to bus losses, to... So you are a very, very good district. Mr. Groder, maintenance, food service, finance, you all are highly, highly proactive, and do an incredible job of wanting to do what's right from the school to keep it safe, and again...
And I'll just interject, all of us have, representatives of those departments have already met with them, and just talked with them about things we expect of you all, and things for us to keep going, to be proactive as a district.
Yep. Yeah, and so we got tired as agents of delivering good districts like you, 20% to 25% increases every year, and we said, "There's got to be a better way." And so that's really what launched this project. And again, this is a highly selective program, it's not for everybody, but it's for high-performing school districts, and you were one of only 10 that we added this year. So just, there's three qualifying factors, you have to have a great loss ratio, which you guys do, you have to be referred in by a current member, which you were, you were referred in by a neighboring district, and not just that, you have to be proactive in risk management, and all those things that you guys are doing. So you were a perfect fit, and we look forward to continuing a long-term relationship. I actually live in Somerset, so I'm right up the road, don't hold that against me. So I'm right up the road, is anything y'all make me know. One of the things about the program for Kentucky is, is built by schools for schools. So the people who run this program are insurance executives, they're five current superintendents, so that's important. And that's what we like about the program, and that's how we plan on adding quality districts just like yourself. It's not some, if they want a quote, we can't provide. It's referral in, and we were very selective, so congratulations.
Some things that I'm really excited about, that they've talked to me, that may be coming down the road. For instance, we just paid out several thousands of dollars to do our basketball goal, our bleacher inspections, and all those types of things. They're looking at employing someone to do that, so the district is not at those costs. And we do that every year, just be proactive with all those inspections. And another thing is, we pay out several thousand dollars a year for all of our yearly Safe Schools and other video training services that we use for this particular program, and that's another thing, I know that, those are not right now, but they're just really open to ideas and things that would help the districts that we're currently paying and doing on our own, that might be something they could come on, be of benefit to Russell County, but be of benefit to all the districts. And so, really been open on some conversations and some things like that, that I'm really excited that hopefully will come to fruition.
Just to the boards aware too, when David was talking about a member being ran by superintendents, we have a member sit in the group once a year, it'll be in November, and superintendent and the finance directors are invited, and we go over all the financials, we're very transparent with what we do, we talk about where our balances are, and we talk about those programs. And the programs that Superintendent Ford, or two programs directly mentioned to us last year, moving forward. So first year, we were just taking small steps, but we know, we're going to be able to launch, we know, the Safe Schools program next year, which for every district, you're talking thousands of dollars, and they'll get that same program through us, through our program, and it'll be benefits to you, so you'll save on insurance premiums, and we're going to work on saving some other things. We also have some other partnerships we won't be able to announce yet, but we're getting ready to launch, so it'll be for Bluegrass membership, only two for the district. So that's where it becomes a much more powerful program than just paying a premium, you're working with other like districts, and now, when we go out to work with other people, we have 37, hopefully two more next year, when we start talking about things, that people want to work with us, when we have that many people coming together. So that'll be another nice added, next year, we hope to be sitting here and saying, "These are the five things we were able to offer, and didn't cost you any more than what your premium is, and you can save and do some more things for bands or other programs in the school." That's our goal. My biggest goal for being an educator for 29 years is to be able to come back and work with superintendents, and let them have money to do things in their district versus paying for something at a higher cost. That was so frustrating to me, when I had to pay certain things, like insurance.
There's no magic pot of money, is there, Mike? Pay for that, except the general fund.
And having control over it, we knew there was a better way to do it, so that's why I got involved with this, and I was one of the first districts to work with these two individuals and the folks up in Covington, that we got this off the ground, so that's kind of how I got involved. Our whole goal is not, it's not about making big profits, it's about helping districts and putting money back in the districts. We've modeled this off of some programs in different states, it's been very, very beneficial. There's one in Ohio that's about the same size as ours right now, and they're 20 years old, but just so you know, they have a $40 million surplus. So what that allows them to do is, it keeps their premiums down every year, they're allowed to give dividends down the road, where they can work on things, back to their district. So that's our goal, when I said an investment, it's not, you're going to see some very short-term benefits, but the goal is, as a board, you're setting your district up for years to come to have an opportunity to do things through your insurance program that you will never be able to do if you stay in the programs that you're in. So, any other questions for us? We don't want to take too much time.
Well, I appreciate you all coming, they wanted to come and just kind of give some more information to the board, and a little bit more about what they were out, what they were about, and what they were looking at doing, so I appreciate you all coming in.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is enrollment update.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, I'm going to just briefly go over our K-12 enrollment so far. We ended, I'll tell you the five schools, and I'll tell you the district total. This is comparing the numbers from the last day of school last year until, as of Friday, when we have most everybody back.
So K-12, not preschool, because that's still getting enrolled and lining it up.
Just K-12. So last year, Jamestown Elementary ended the year at 4:49, and as of Friday, they were at 4:40, which is down about nine students. Russell County High School ended the year at 822 students, and they are up 20 to 842. Russell County Middle School ended the year at 642 students, and they are up to 648, which is an increase of six. Russell Springs Elementary ended the year at 577 students, and they're up to 582, so that's an increase of five. And then Salem Elementary fluctuated a little bit, they were at 382, and they're down to 368, which is a negative 14. But overall, as a district, for K-12 enrollment, we ended the year at 2,872 students, and currently, we have 2,880, which is up eight, so we're holding steady. And when you throw preschool in with that next week, we'll be right over the 3,000 mark again, which is kind of where we...
We have always been relatively stable on our enrollment. We'll go up a little bit and go down a little bit, but you know, I always tell principals that numbers are a good thing, you always want to be going up on numbers, certainly. So, thank you, Mrs. Dameron.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda.
You have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, field trips, and Ms. Carnes will do the treasurer's monthly report.
Our treasurer's report for the month of July 2025, the balance on hand at the beginning of the month was $19,812,061.53. Receipts for the month, $3,186,400.32. Total receipts and beginning balance together, $22,998,461.85. Disbursements for the month were $3,177,753.65, and that brought our balance at the close of the month to $19,820,708.20. And our fund balances for the general fund, Fund One, $9,645,089.47. Special projects, Fund Two, $618,797.8. District activity, Fund Twenty-One, $53,003.46. Capital outlay, Fund Three Ten, $131,143 even. FSPK Building Fund, Fund Three Twenty, $331,868.34. Construction Fund, Three Sixty, $8,538,204.11. Debt service, Fund Four Hundred, zero dollars. Food service, Fund Fifty-One, $502,602.74. Our fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, zero dollars, and that brought our cash and bank for all the funds to $19,820,708.20.
All good, healthy balances. Thank you, Ms. Carnes. I recommend approval of the consent agenda items as presented. I was ready to go on.
Motion. Mr. Selby? Second. Mr. Murray?
I think Murray got it.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Hickinbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Mike, Justin, all them, I know you all drove a distance, well, except for you, Justin, you're not too far away, but if you all need to leave, I'm sure the board, we totally understand.
Next item on the agenda is marching band practice area BG Two and BG Three.
So, got Allison coming, and I'm sorry, I've met you, but I cannot...
Kylie.
Yeah, Kylie, sorry Kylie. At the board meeting tonight, we're going to talk about the BG Two, which is the outline specification for the energy design criteria, and the BG Three, which is statement of probable cost, I've got a typo there, for the marching band practice area. And I will note that the initial BG One, again, that's just a rough estimate, you know, nothing's been put out to bid, but as we got in further in the project, but the initial BG One was $328,254, the BG Three, which is the statement of probable cost, is $573,627. So as noted previously, though, that's still not going, we're not looking at a general fund expenditure to where we can take that from capital outlay funds, and so it will not come out of general fund. But I will let you all go ahead.
Sure. So the BG Two is a typical form that we fill out for all construction projects, there's really not a whole lot on it, because there's no buildings, it's just a band tower, but it does talk about the structure of the band tower, it talks about the electrical power on site, as well as the conduit and wiring for the sound system, and then that's pretty much it for that BG Two, it's pretty light. The BG Three, as Mr. Ford already kind of touched on, that initial budget number, so the construction cost was initially about $285,000. If you look at the BG Three, we did not have any money in that BG One for electrical. So as we started meeting with Mr. Irvin and his group, and talking through some things that they need, we realized pretty quickly that there will be some electrical scope on the project, and we'll go through that when we present those drawings. But that's a large portion of why that increased. We also did not have included a pedestrian, I call it a pedestrian, bridge to really get that band tower situated for optimal viewing for the band director. So that wasn't included in the BG One as well, it is included in the BG Three estimate. So those are two of the main reasons that that jumped up. With your soft cost, the total project cost, we are estimating at $573,627... Yeah, $573,627.46. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about...
I think, and we'll talk about this probably again, with the construction design documents, but I don't think this is a project that we'll come back to and say, "Well, I wish that, you know, we're..." It's not going to be a half-done project. I mean, I think Mr. Irvin would agree with that, especially with the addition of the band tower, the striping, and the detail that's went into the striping, all those types of things like that, the fence, electrical, the audio, I think it's fair, Mr. Irvin, to say, "A nice complete project when we're done with this." And so, I know some things have been said about, you know, throw down some pavement somewhere, and that will work fine, and just kind of off-the-cuff comments maybe out in the public, but this is, you know, it's also a classroom. You know, we invest in our classrooms, and marching band, I think it certainly, it's bigger, it's more than an extension of a classroom, and it's not like we are renovating an existing facility either, for they, bands never had one. So is it expensive? It is. But I think, is it something that's well worth it for an outstanding group of young men and women? I do, and I think that, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think that they will agree with that. So I recommend approval of the BG Two and the BG Three for the marching band practice area. And we'll talk about it again, because we've got two different agenda items, but with you all's approval of this, and then we'll talk about that timeline for bid, and then when the bids come back, of course, nothing's ever done until you all accept the bids, obviously. But there's a timeline for that as well, and then, at such time, if you all accept the bids, then we would have to amend post-bid for the BG One, that initial cost estimate that we got when we did the BG One.
Is there a motion?
I like that motion.
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Hickinbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Thank you all. Mr. Jonathan's going to drive that for you, Allison.
Yes, wonderful.
Next item on the agenda is marching band practice area, construction documents advertised to receive bids.
Right, so this is the actual construction set of drawings. We have Ben Mullins here with us from ABE, so we'll go ahead and flip over to the site. This is just the existing conditions, I don't know if, Ben, there's anything you want to note on here, of really any importance. This is just showing you what you currently have, and what, and so this is where we're starting, and so the next sheet...
I do, at the applicable time, I do want to talk about that bridge, and really, the tower probably costs a little bit more than some towers, just because of elevation and where it needs to be put.
Yes.
So we could talk about that when we...
Yes. So this is the site, this is the site demolition plan, and obviously, the nets from the tennis courts will be removed. We are reusing as much of the existing chain link posts as possible, and those will just be field coated with the PVC coating, and then we will receive new chain link fencing material, and then there obviously will be some new posts as well, because we're changing the layout out there. There's also some existing light poles that are clouded, and those will be relocated with new lights provided on those poles, so again, trying to make sure that we provide ample light, but also trying to be good stewards of your money and reuse those poles. Go to the next one, Jonathan. So this is the layout of the band practice area. It is striped, just like a football field, I believe, what are the overall dimensions, do you recall? 130 deep by... It basically goes from one 20-yard line to the other 20-yard line, so...
Seven and a half feet past each 20.
Yeah, so you basically are getting over two-thirds of a football field practice area out there. We also, in working with Mr. Irvin and his department, made sure that we have enough space, so we have 20 feet on the right-hand side there, where they will have some musicians set up with percussion, and we want to make sure also we provide power there, so there's 20 feet there, and then, we are borrowing a little bit of space from that existing drive, do we have, is it 22?
22 feet.
22 feet clear on that drive, so it's still plenty for cars to get through, and we talked through that. We'll also provide bollards along that edge, so the entire perimeter will be wrapped in a six-foot tall chain link fence, to keep it secure and shut down when it's not in use.
And it's so much safer for our students than what they, I mean, Mr. Irvin does a great job of managing that, and the traffic and things like that, but when you're out here, you know, it's just hard to manage people in a parking lot, and so this will be so much safer for our students.
And then the bottom left corner, I don't know if you see that kind of extra area in gray behind the striping area, that's just some extra storage, lay-down space for them to unload, load musical instruments, equipment, whatever they may need, and it will have a large vehicular gate that they can pack a trailer or a truck into. All right, we'll go to the next sheet. Probably the least exciting structural drawings, this is just showing you the foundation of the band tower, we'll go to the next one, Jonathan, and then some foundation details for the columns on that tower and the pedestrian bridge. So this is your band tower, and as Mr. Ford noted earlier, we have a little bit of a unique site condition, so where typically most schools would just have a band tower, we have a band tower and this pedestrian bridge that is allowing you to keep your elevated views at a good eye line for the field, because you have 14 feet of grade change, so we're just kind of getting you up to that height you need to be, if you want it to be level with the field, if that makes sense. So the band tower from the ground to the very top is about 58 feet tall, and then that, yeah, very tall.
I'm not in the band.
And then that pedestrian bridge is about 48 feet long, so it's, that's how long it's taking to get you to the band tower from where the practice field is going to be.
And there's a couple of, there's more than a couple, but the biggest issue is, again, if someone says, "Well, why didn't we just put it at the end of the tennis courts?" Your line of sight, Mr. Irvin, has been so insightful, talking about the line of sight, you lose all of that when it's that close up, and we don't have the territory there anyway, so it had to be pushed back on that elevation part there to make the line of sight work, or we're losing all of our advantages for having that band tower.
After multiple conversations with Mr. Ford and Mr. Irvin, we decided to do a observation deck at 16 feet, and then another one at 32 feet, to get the best optimal lines of sight for Mr. Irvin and the tower. And there are a series of gates along this tower, at the beginning of that pedestrian bridge, at the actual entrance to the tower, and then, there's going to be a perimeter gate at the bottom to address some of the safety concerns they have with the height of the structure and students' access to the structure. And there's also going to be, per Mr. Irvin's request, a fixed countertop... And there's also going to be, per Mr. Irvin's request, a fixed countertop at both of those observation decks. We talked a little bit about some of the other band towers and visiting different schools that you encountered and how it would probably be optimal to have that fixed countertop to be able to set sheet music on at a good height to be able to read it.
But even that height, they talked to Mr. Irvin about. You know, that's what I'm saying. This was not just something thrown out and said, "Here you go." Every step of the way, the decision-makers were involved.
There will also be electrical outlets and data outlets at each both observation levels so that they are able to plug in for their sound system and any other devices that they have up there.
I will publicly state that Larry McGowan, this is not to be used for deer hunting. I just want that recorded, minutes reflected, Ms. Carol. You couldn't, Ms. Joy, yeah.
We'll move on to the layout. A bunch of electrical notes, very exciting. So I believe this is your demolition plan, so we're just showing some of the, I know we're going to relocate some of the, we're going to remove your existing light fixtures, and then there will be some reworking at that existing panel at the northwest corner of the courts for new work. And then we'll flip to the next one. So this is showing you your new electrical connections that are needed. We are adding one additional pole light, but we're reusing three of them. So this is showing the underground, it's also showing the underground conduit for power and data that will be ran from one of those poles over to the band tower in the front of the practice area. There will be a couple of outlets there as well for, for students to use up there in the front. And then these are just some details of the electrical. And I believe that is it.
That's the same document that you all.
There will be two alternates on the project. The first alternate will be owner-preferred vendor for the band tower. We have worked very closely with Clark, Clark Metals, I keep wanting to say Systems.
No, it's Metals.
Clark Metal Works of Springfield, Kentucky. They have done a lot of band towers in this area. I know Mr. Irvin is very familiar with them and has worked with them closely. So in order for you to get a price specifically for them, we would have to have an owner-preferred alternate. And then alternate number two similarly would be owner-preferred for your sound system. It would be the same manufacturer that you have at your football field, and I think you all have been pleased with that system, so.
And that's one of the things we did for cost savings.
Yes.
Working with some of these other companies on some of the cost estimates, because that was several thousand dollars difference.
Yes, it was. Cheaper.
Yes, yes.
Happy to answer any questions.
It looks amazing, but I don't know. Mr. Irvin, Ms. Harrington, do you all have anything else to?
It's, it's what you need, isn't it? Very, very grateful. I just, I know that this kind of setup, it's, it's going to be one of the con, it's, it's, I think, you know, along with all the other things that we have here from a facility standpoint that we're very proud of and looks great, I think this will be a great addition to that, the school grounds here. And I just, I can't, I can't, I can't imagine having it better set up. I just, I mean, it's just, just having the sight line, having the sound line, having the ability to do so many things from an electronic standpoint, the convenience, you know, a lot of these students know what it's like when we get down on a Thursday night refusing that rehearsal and having to will all this equipment from out here in the slides up to the, the band room for storage and, you know, for them to be able to just go from those tennis courts to the band room and, and then being mad at all the kids that come after them that don't know that struggle and, you know, talking about not having the tower right up there and just not knowing what it's like to stand on top of a box truck and look down at them and.
And run generators.
And run generators.
And all the extension cords.
And just, I, I can't, I mean, we're, we're very appreciative always of support that we've gotten from the board and from the school and the community, and we've always tried to make it happen. We've always tried to do the best of what we've had, and we've been very blessed, very fortunate to, to have a lot of success and however you want to measure success with the setup that we've had. But I can't imagine what kind of opportunity indoors this opens, not only for some people that are in this room right now, but years from now. I just, I, I just can't imagine, and.
I think it will definitely be one of those projects where people will say, "Have you seen what they got in Russell County?"
I definitely do, and I, and I think it'd be the kind of thing that other school districts around will, will look to, to try to mimic.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's great. If we've got something going on here that's that great, but other people want to emulate it, then I, I feel like we're, we're moving in the right direction there and I've got a speech to strike now.
And you know, to say, except for, obviously, any time you put a seal coat on blacktop, you eventually have to coat it again, but besides that, you know, what's going to be out there is going to stay there. Your band tower is fabricated steel, it's not going anywhere. You know, your light poles and all those fixtures and your fence and things like that. So again, except for, you know, every X amount of years for, yeah, some maintenance and, and resurfacing that, this should be a, a project that's here for many, many years, you know, without, you'd agree with that, without anything, you know, having to be done to it or, or having to replace it. So it's not something that's, you know, that's just here for a few years. It's, it's going to be here for a long time. Want to talk about the next part there, the advertising for bids?
Yes, so schedule-wise, if the board chooses to approve the construction documents and advertising to receive bids, the pre-bid meeting has been scheduled. It would really go to Lint Imaging probably tomorrow for distribution. The pre-bid meeting is scheduled for September 4th, and then the bid opening is scheduled for September 16th. And so hopefully we will have some good bids to present to you all in September, whenever your board meeting will be, and hopefully move forward from there. Construction schedule-wise, the date of substantial completion is July 1 of next year. So, you know, we're kind of hitting at a, a little bit of a strange time where the asphalt plant will shut down in November, so we just want to make sure to give them enough time in the spring that they're comfortable to get that done and still give you all a good price.
Yep. So we will, probably, probably don't want to wait till the November, and the way the time is falling, we won't be able to hit it for the September board meeting unless, we're going to talk later about the need to reschedule the September board meeting because of the KSVA regionals on that same date. We could, if we did it later that week, then we could still have the bid opening and address the bids that are going to open on the 16th. So that's something to think about, too, versus having it that morning or something like that. If we did it another day, we could capture those bids at that September board meeting. So something to think about when we talk about that here in a few minutes. So I recommend approval of the construction documents for the marching band practice area and authorization for Sherman Carter Barnhart to advertise for bids.
Do we all move?
Unanimous?
Yeah.
Joy just made the motion, but you're second.
I'll say it.
Second.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Thank you all. Say that, say that loud.
We've never got a clap. So we must be doing something right.
You all are welcome to leave or stay for the meeting. Thank you for coming.
Yes, do, thank you. Appreciate you.
Appreciate it very much.
Landon, you could have brought your guitar and played for us.
Yeah, they don't play, I don't know what to do. I hope they don't have pretty wet inside of there.
Yeah.
Just turn them off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Well, if we did have a, yeah.
Who's safe?
Yeah. I told you, you sort of, I don't make some commitments before, you know.
I'm surprised somebody didn't get right over.
Oh, I know it.
Because the other night, they was out there practicing, they had a ball, they was all the way around.
Absolutely, I know it.
What are you doing out there?
I don't want to know. Anything you want to change?
Destin? He might go up there and pass out. Destin, are you really going to leave that seat empty? Oh, for Johnson's there, okay.
Next item is construction updates.
We, of course, over the last little bit, we've had some pretty good weather and want to give you a few updates on what's going on at the bus garage and also the field house. We'll start first, this is the bus garage. This picture was actually taken Friday, this is Friday still.
It, it's outdated that quick, too?
Well, this later on.
Oh, okay.
They were shaking out steel, it was delivered Friday, it was ready to go.
Keep this in mind, that was Friday.
And got the roadway in going back to the, uh, uh, bus garage. And this is, yes, today, this morning. This is this morning. So pretty much all the structure's been set, part of it's around, interior columns, frame frames, all that's still been set. They started on Friday, so made good progress over the weekend in this, obviously, at the bus garage. This is the home field house. As you can see, they're a little farther along. It's been, steel's been set, they're inside working, a lot of the sheeting on the exterior's done. You can see part of that retained wall sticking out there that goes around the building. It's been torn. That's the home field house, they're kind of leaving the way in and out with access inside the building. You can see this is, I think these HVAC units in there, like, sitting in there, this HVAC units, yeah. So HVAC units are here, they're inside the building. We're getting a lot of stuff done on the inside of the building. This is the locker room, the home locker room area is what you're looking at out there. But we're getting away so we can get the big material in there. This is the side that goes around behind the home locker room that gives you access over to the visitor's side. We've had that in gravel for some time, so that'll be access to get over to the visitor's side of the field. This is the visitor's locker room. And you can see through this picture, that metal kind of looks black, but it's not black because it kind of looks like it in that picture, but you see the canopies over the concession, those are the two canopies over the concession area. You see the mat going on, the drains getting done. This is the visitor locker room. You can see that's, that's the bleachers, visitor bleachers, this sits right behind the visitor bleachers on the visitor's side of the football field.
And that area in between the two will of course be concrete.
Yes.
Clean up all that.
Yeah, all that will be filled with concrete. This is inside the storage area of the, is this the home of the visitor room? Visitor side, that's the storage area inside of the visitor locker room. And this is looking inside the visitor locker rooms, it got units already going up, that were getting there started, getting quite a bit done inside the building. So I kind of give you an update of where we're at on those two projects. Any questions on update?
Good.
Do you have a projected completion date, I don't guess?
Well, we're going to talk about some changes here that will affect some of that, so we will update that completion date once we figure out what we're going to do as far as some of this.
Of course, we were thankful, we're thankful now that we had the rain when we did, but that delayed the project. Of course, now we're dry as a bone, you know, but.
The visitors, looks like it's not done.
It's getting close. I mean, we're working inside, but outside it's really taking shape. Still got site work to go around.
It is navy blue outside, I assume.
Yeah, it's not, it just looks darker than that picture.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is proposed request number 01, Russell County Bus Garage and Field House Project Plumbing Revisions at Field House.
So if you'll allow me just a minute, Mr. Kazook, I just want to make some statements before we get in because we've got several construction things to, to talk about. The, the first one on the, on the plumbing revisions, part of it is code related at the state, and part of it is that they, it was, and Mr. Devon, then we'll talk about it here in a minute, but it was left out from the initial bid, so it was never bid. So it's, it's, you know, it's never been considered for bid to begin with. My thought on that was that I don't, personally, I don't feel like the board should get something for nothing. I don't think that you all roll that way. And we had a, on a smaller scale, but we had something a little bit similar to this when we built the tech center. I can't remember, it might have been some duck work, I can't remember, but it was a part of the project that was, that was never put out to bid to begin with. But Devon is going, Mr. Cheek's going to go through all of that. Number two is one that the board had already approved, the initial, some timing material for fixing the soft spot. I think the allocation initially was up for $10,000, and it's been done and it's been taken care of, so that's the number two. And going through here on the rest of these, I'd ask the team to really look at items and do some, some, some things that we could potentially cut out or reduce, or maybe would be great at the project, but we don't necessarily have to have it at the project for a few reasons. To, to expand the lighting there on the, in the parking lot, to put the surface coat on the existing parking that we have at the athletic complex, because that's just the base coat, if you remember. And also why we're doing it, because it wasn't an initial cost to go ahead and put air conditioning at the bus garage. All of those types of things, of course, we was working on a budget, trying to stay within a budget when we were doing design and everything at the beginning, but all of those things were not things that were initially in the project. And, and so much to their, I don't know what word you all want to use when I ask you all to do all that, but just to, just to look at things that we could, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe we had a Cadillac spec and, and the Chevrolet would do just as, just as well. So some of those areas. And then part of it was the site development that was to the south of the bus garage, to remove those drains and things like that. So I say all of that because it's a lot of proposal requests, several of these are on here because I asked the team to look at that and say, "Let's see what we can do while we're doing it." And maybe. and maybe cut out some areas on some things. So there's a lot of things to talk about here, that's kind of why they're at the table. I don't want anybody to feel rushed if somebody has a question, uh, you know, just, just to stop us as we're going through it, and, and just kind of work through them all. But that's another reason that we broke them all out individually into, um, individual proposal requests, that will, each item will require individual board action. And number four is not missing somewhere, it's just that number four was initially a proposal request to demo, to demo, uh, the maintenance building, but since I was going to ask you all to, um, about demo in the old band room and those other old buildings out there, we just put that in that project. And so that's why proposal request number four is not there. It's not that something's missing, it's just that we withdrew that proposal request to, uh, to begin with, you all. So having said all of that, I'm getting ready to turn it over to you, Mr. Devon, or whoever's going to speak first. This first one here, number one, this, uh, this proposal request addresses the additional plumbing for showers and additional plumbing added by the state. So that's not uncommon when the state reviews plans, they may find things that they want to add, delete, and otherwise. But the original drawing, some significant plumbing was inadvertently left out and thus was, was never bid. And then again, I've noted here that during plan review, the state made some additional changes. That added cost in the, the, of course, the complete proposal request with the breakdowns is attached. I will hush, and you all can have the floor.
That was a very charitable characterization of the PR one. Bulk of that PR, the total of the PR is $88,000, the bulk of that is omissions by us. We're human, we make mistakes, and our humanity is on full display in this PR. So we had eight showers, but the infrastructure for those showers was not included in the bid. As Mr. Ford alluded to, that wasn't in the original contracts, and this is the cost of all those showers. It was, it was missed. The other portion of that is state changes, when it goes to state to give review for plumbing, they came back, they added some fixtures on us that we hadn't seen that we needed, didn't think we needed. We leveraged our connection there and relationship with them, and with the help of Larry, came up with some creative solutions to knock that down. That 18,000 is state required items, and they kind of put her ball at us with, uh, the omissions on our part, that started at about 80 grand, and we were able to get that down to a price you see at 68,000. There's not much more to say about it than that, um, not a fun one to talk about, especially with clients like you that worked with for nearly 13 years, so...
But we have had, Destin, how many conversations have we had about this? It's been a lot.
A long one.
Yeah, and so we have, uh, everybody's worked really hard, because my, and they can tell you, I wasn't happy about it, but, like I said from the beginning, I don't think that you all would want something for nothing. And secondly, um, everyone worked really hard, that it's fair prices, you know, and it's, it's down from what it was initially. It just, everybody put a lot of time in, in with it. Looking at those, the proposal request on number one for the bus garage and the fieldhouse, uh, or the, I'm sorry, it's not anything to do with the... Was the state plumbing, did that have some for the bus garage, Devon? Was that all fieldhouses?
Yes, that, yes, there was a mob scene.
Okay, the mob scene, yeah.
The urinal was what we were able to, we did come off of.
Where we had two toilets and they wanted one urinal. My argument was that that toilet would do the same thing as the urinal, didn't it, Larry? Yeah, so that was one thing the state said, that's going to make us take out a, a toilet and put in a urinal. But, but you can do what you need to do in the toilet, what you need to do in the urinal. Any questions, or anybody else have anything to say on number one? And of course, the plumber that got the bid with the rest of it would be the one doing this work, um, that's already on site working and stuff like that.
This is a vague rate item, you get what you're paying for, just don't buy it, you said it was changed.
Right.
And Mr. Ford, I will say too, and not just this item, but others that we look at, you do have construction contingency.
Yes, yes.
And to date, we've not used any of that construction contingency. We started with 416,000. Now, obviously, PR two, you know, we had to spend that money for us to be sold, so we started with a little over 416,000 construction contingency. So until any of these approved, we've not used any of that money, and that's where this would come from. It's not like it's going to be adding cost to the project, it's just going to be pulled from that construction contingency.
Yes, that's a good point, I didn't bring that up, Johnson, thank you. I recommend approval of proposal request number one for the Russell County Bus Garage, Russell County Bus Garage and Fieldhouse Project as presented and authorized Superintendent Ford to complete the change order paperwork.
Motion. Second.
Who's second?
Mr. Murray.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
And I, I know I've already said this once, but I, I just want to say again, the time that we have spent on all of these, um, working through them, every single part of the design team and, and all the folks has been a, a lot, and I appreciate, I want to say that publicly. I appreciate each of you all for the time that's been spent on this, because we've had in-person meetings, we've had phone calls, we've had Zoom, we've had emails, it's just a lot of work has went together on, on all of these.
Next item is proposal request number two, our Russell County Bus Garage, Fieldhouse unit prices for proof roll, proof roll test results.
So again, this was one that the board had previously approved, and it was, uh, we were kind of guesstimating that, at that point, at $10,000 for timing material, and the actual price is $6,099.35 for the, um, soft spot that they had to work on at, um, the fieldhouse. So I recommend approval of proposal request, did you all have anything else to add on that one? We talked about it, the previous one.
I'm telling you, it's part of construction. You record all the site, still business, you really get a reasonable idea. Scott Murphy's been with the fire department.
Talk louder.
And there'll be one more little bus garage every three, four months.
Joy's telling you to talk louder.
I was telling you to talk louder, but you didn't sound like you got to be louder.
Okay, Joy. It's just part of construction, I mean, it's a cold reel, 10 times, and once popping between eight and nine, it's just part of construction. This is very small, the size of one we had on Athletic Complex, you know, we had to...
We had there, in the baseball field, yeah.
With, you know, springs, this is just off to the side, it was up on the hill a little bit. It's something we fixed at the time, and, you know, we didn't know who was going to come right back in and say, it did get fixed a little time. But you're not, again, you're not paying for something twice, and we have to do some of this stuff like this, you can Ellie Gregg just sign off on your building for special inspections, and that's just kind of the background why we had to do it.
Well, since you brought up that, um, just so the board knows again, and public wise, the levels of folks that check other people's work throughout this project. So you referenced Ellie Gregg, and we referenced this soft spot, so it wasn't that just the contractor went out there and said, hey, I need $10,000 to fix this site. So just, if you don't care, just for a minute, just share that.
Well, you can sit down and actually come up with a whole list of people that have to, you know, inspect everything from job, every pocket of the job. Ellie Gregg's there for, I mean, you're all...
So the geotech.
Hard to, you know, to assure you that you're going to get a job, that's what you're paid for, that he's going to last, he's going to stand there. And, you know, when we come up with something like this, we call them, they come out, they send a tech, uh, actually, we'll dig down to a certain level, we'll call a hard man or whatever, and then we'll proof them. Put an 80,000 pound truck on, run across the water, we're different ways we do it, but it's, it's not only them, we've got other guys out there, you don't have to work 34 years, and so it's not like they're just trying to do something for the sake of making money or whatever. They can make more money, they never hit a soft spot. Actually, in most cases, you say, cause you got to go around, there's a lot of guessing work, you can't fix it till everybody gets there, you know, and it's...
Sometimes it stops the project.
Yes, it does. You know, and so far on this, we've had enough that we can pretty much work on those deals, but it's cost time and money.
Thank you, Larry. And I will also note that that's the first time I've ever heard anybody tell you to talk louder. Jonathan, Destin, have you all ever heard that before? That was just too easy, I missed you, I couldn't let that one go. Mr. Murray's smiling on that one, Larry. So I recommend approval of the proposal request number two for the Russell County Bus Garage and Fieldhouse Project as presented and authorized Superintendent Ford, uh, to complete the change order paperwork.
Second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Selby.
Okay.
Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is proposal request number three, Russell County Bus Garage and Fieldhouse Project Site Lighting at Athletic Complex.
Okay, again, so this is one that we've asked them to look at to expand the lighting in the parking lot. So the original bid package did not include that for the expanded parking lot area, and this is one of those areas I've asked them to look at and see what we could come up with. The total cost is $48,101.02, and who's going to talk about?
Actually, this is something, on this job, we've got, you know, two engineers on site, we've got AGE and CMGA. On your original Athletic, everything pretty much went through AGE. On this one, we had CMGA and AGE. This is kind of, I guess you'd say, oversight pointed to, uh, nobody ever caught it until after, you know, the bid was done and complete. So nobody actually designed the extra lighting up there.
Yeah, there's more coordination on mine and the electrical engineer, CMGA, we did, neither one's caught it, and we both should have been looking at it.
But we've done a lot of conversation about even double head, single head, placement of the poles, you know, all those types of things.
And that involves your existing building out there, we've beat it around a lot, but again, this $48,000, it's a vague rate item. Didn't pay for it before, there's not something ready to change, or something wasn't under code, or whatever, you're getting what you're paid for.
And you'll get five double-headed light poles, so, um, well lit. We tried to minimize the amount of poles, but maximize the amount of light, if that makes sense, so...
This is like where the new?
Coming out to the new area. And, well, it's going to expand to the, um, it will help the existing as well.
For the old garage.
More further to the side.
Yeah, out to the back, yeah.
You're also getting three light packs in.
Say they'll get that time.
You're getting three light packs.
Yes. Yes, that's, and that will help the existing part, because they're putting some wall packs on the building, on the baseball building.
Baseball hill, baseball.
Yes. So it will be, it will be a good lift building, Ms. Joy, or area, yeah.
You get one more run of poles to the south, all the way across the parking lot, you get one pole added to the end, what we already got, two light packs on the baseball building.
Correct me if I'm wrong, does this not include the electrical outlets along? They did it at the same time.
Yes, I think.
The electrical outlets that we put along the football field.
Oh, on the... You didn't hear what Larry said. He wants the RV park out there still, I told him not. Food trucks, maybe, yes.
Black and camper up there, and that's where you can't...
That's what he, that's what he...
Actually, what he's talking about with the plug-ins, is if you pull a burn next to the, uh, track and football field, there's going to be a 130-foot sidewalk there that we're going to have parked along that. That's an ideal place for your tailgate parties, or your mom and pop to sit there, grandpa and grandma, uh, and watch their kids, their grandkids play ball. And we thought it was a good idea, able to 10 or 15 foot, just to put a convenience plug in there. They're going to be able to back up there and actually use a fan, you know, or something like that, rather than sitting out the bowl on something. And it's very, that's a very inexpensive item, and we thought it would be a good...
That's what he's wanting, he wants to make me into an RV park manager. So I recommend approval of proposal request number three, three, for the Russell County Bus Garage and Fieldhouse Project as presented and authorized Superintendent Ford to complete the change order paperwork.
Motion.
Motion, Brandon, second. Mr. Murray?
Mr. Murray.
Seconded. Vote.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay. So number four was the one, I talked about at the beginning, we, we initially had it, but we withdrew it, because it's actually going to be addressed in the, in, on the BG one here. Yes.
Next item on the agenda, proposal request number five, Russell County Bus Garage and Fieldhouse Project Value Engineering Items Deducts.
So again, this is a total deduct to the project, where I'd ask the team to come up with some, some additional dollars so we can make certain, we could do the surface coat, add air conditioning to the bus garage, and there's, there's several items here, um, you know, the, for instance, when we talk about the curb, a curb on the road going back to the, to the visitor's side, fieldhouse, with that, with, you know, or the curb around the bus garage site. To me, that's, you know, that would maybe would have been great, but definitely not needed in the whole scope on a, on a bus garage parking lot. So I don't know who's going to go through these.
And the biggest part of this PR two, or added part of this PR, is the surface on the parking lot.
Yes.
It's, this PR is actually a deduct, but you're getting an add of $56,000 to put an inch and a half surface over the existing parking lot. So that's included, and you're actually getting that for a deduct, because all the deducts are more than the add. So this whole package gets you that surface over the existing parking lot, so you get a nice little parking lot going along.
Plus the deduct.
Actually, if you look at this, I'll just go through it, add it, write it, or line it, and that way maybe everybody can understand it a bit. But what Johnson's saying, when you look at the bottom on this, you're getting $60,000 back. That's not really true according to the saying, but you got $120,000. But during this vote request, we spent another 60-something thousand dollars to get something we didn't have, okay? Because your existing parking lot out there didn't have any finished blacktop on it, and we're adding striping, et cetera. If you want to follow this, I'll try to explain it to you the best I can, and talk about it enough that you hear. The first part of it, that is actually up at the bus garage, you had an alternate in there to, to move a bank and stuff, and develop some other parking, or some other building lots and stuff, you didn't have the money to do it, so you didn't do that, okay? We had, I guess you'd say, a spider web drain, well, that's a swamp down through there, and we were going to drain all that, palm down to, uh, the other property down there, just south of it. We didn't have to do that, we don't have to do that right now, okay? So that's your first part, you got $11,000 deduct for material, another $3,600 for labor, and your equipment. And that's Scott Murphy gave that, and I think that we were very fair at that. That is something that would have been good, it's something you didn't have to have, especially with the development of those other buildings out now. We've got another way, I think we're going to develop, you hold it right down, it's going to cost a lot less later, but you won't get hard as much ground, but you don't need it right now. Uh, actually, uh, something else we did that, you know, I think is fine, you know, we, we deleted the finished blacktop off the road that goes back from the, uh, home fieldhouse to the visitor's fieldhouse. That's going to be blacktop, it's going to be based just like you got it in the parking lot now. And that's not a high traffic area, it's not something that's going to be back there seen all the time. And I recommended that, and that, that gives you left $250 deduct to use for stuff that is going to be seen that you need. The next item is the $56,000 that Johnson's talking about, that's adding an inch and a half of surface to the existing parking lot, and our idea for doing that is, the fact that when we get this done, we'll come in a blacktop, though we won't have a line in there whether we done first or done second, when we get done with it, you're not going to be told.
And the entire project will have a surface coat with the striping on it. And it'll also help just, it's, it's code and it's not an issue, but the curb along the sidewalk, that will also bring that up an inch and a half along that edge there a little bit, so...
Actually, we're not exactly totally legal all the way through right now, because if you're over seven inches, you're not supposed to be over seven. It will be seven or less, once we get this on, once the construction's all done. Uh, there's another $6,900 there that's for the striping, once we put the surface on, we got to re-strip it also, and we'll get all the assigned, et cetera. The next item is at the bus garage, actually, Mr. Ford already brought this up and stuff, you had the curb and gutter and islands out in the old parking lots up, which they look pretty, but they're a night iron for your people that's going to take care of it, because you've got grass there, y'all would go on the grass out on the white top, your guy's killed about two foot of the grass anyway, and then your motor's centered. So it don't look good, so we do it, get out. Mr. Ford, Kevin told me, can't see the roundup, Russell County, it's pretty good. I can poke him back to you, Mr. Ford. But you got $13,000 back to that. And all, but in that area, we had to put $12,000 back. And all, but in that area, we had to put twelve thousand dollars back, you know, to get the blacktop and stuff. So, that was basically saving this actually a little budget. Maintenance wise and everything like that, they will be hanging islands. You'll have islands, they'll be a concrete island that you have.
Yeah, so, instead of the raised curbs around an island, this will be flat with asphalt and striped, you know.
Just like we're gonna have back here.
Right.
The next item actually was a curb all the way around on your bus garage. You actually blacktoped down about a third of the way down the bus garage, I guess. The rest of it is rock. All your parking lots and buses and stuff, it's all rock, can't even do the toting, greasing, denting. They had a curb wrapped in that to cut down and wash and stuff. We thought it wasn't necessary to put that curb in there, we'll take care of it. And the way we do it, we may sometime get a little water, I don't believe we're gonna get, it's not gonna be a factor. That's giving you back fifty-eight thousand dollars. That's blacktop in this down here. And then, you know, we get the other two thousand dollars because we're not gonna do any curbs on the rest of it. Get that two thousand dollars right out of that, that was mobilization, see if they had to come back to some curves that we talked about, we moved out here. We had some credit back on the, we moved the home fieldhouse, Brian's gonna give you back eleven thousand dollars because of the footing, the retaining wall. When that building was sent back to the east, we got into some bad soils. The foundation was gonna have to be undercover, like eight foot with a wall coming back at the fore. When we moved this building forward, it got away with all that, so we got that eleven thousand dollar back. We moved it west approximately a hundred and twenty-six feet, so that cut out a hundred and twenty-six feet of sidewalk. And that item, that give you back sixty-four hundred dollars, wait a minute, forty-four hundred dollars. Eleven thousand and sixty-four hundred goes together for the foundations and foundation wall. But anyway, we done away with a hundred and twenty-six foot, six-foot sidewalk, that give you back forty-four hundred and ninety dollars. And in the visitors', we had a lot of stainless steel countertops in there and actually, by doing this other one, probably wouldn't know the difference until we done one and we done from the home side. Of course, they come up with needing a lot more room to set grinding machines and stuff like that. So, we actually deleted some of the stainless steel countertops, give more room for grinding machines and stuff. You got another twenty-seven, twenty-six hundred fifty dollars back on that. The rest of this, Ben and I worked together on it, a bunch of it, in order to, we made some reductions. Part of it was some suggestions, I guess, for the division of water.
Let's see, the first item, the deduction of the two sanitary manholes. Once we shifted the building to a hundred and twenty-six feet, we were able to install two cleanouts instead of these manholes. We didn't have to do the manholes anymore, we could do, you could run that length of pipe and have, just have two cleanouts in between. And manholes are costly item. And also, kinda around the same time, we just had, had an issue with the division of plumbing and stuff. I found out that the way we were currently running our sanitary design, that I'd have to get division of water approval, which was gonna take multiple, about two, two months, two or three months. So, I got to talking with them and figuring out what I could do to not have to go through them. And by removing these manholes and then also taking, we have a grinder pump to pump the visitors over to the home. I'm keeping that separate from our gravity and because of that, I don't have to go through division of plumbing, which saved us a lot of time.
Actually, the way they're using saves you money, it is more feasible later on for us. And at the same time, something else we done on that. We, actually what we've done on this design is the property next to us over here, we got permission to tie on, I don't even remember what the name of the street is, over our, our list or?
Baldet, this one?
Yeah.
Baldet.
We've got permission to run a four-inch line to hold it out, that was in the design and stuff. And we're tying it into the existing, which is gonna enhance the system that you've already got, it's oyster, existing concession stand, baseball building and stuff, it's gonna give more water and supply more pressure. But we didn't feel like, and during the design, as Mr. Ford said, we actually, I guess, designed a Cadillac, but we decided that we didn't need money more for something else. We cut that four-inch water line down to two and a half. That's what they, that they had designed and spent service for the field house. So, that gives you eight thousand dollars back.
We had a lot of length of pipe where we were tying it to the existing system, like just to the north of our water line, to increase the pressure. Instead of doing that, we're gonna tie it at the very end to the service line that runs to the hydrant on the visitor's side. And we'll still be able to increase the pressure for the rest of the system. Cut out, I keep it around the feet of the water line for sale.
Something else this does too by running a line around it, what you got now, you got a dead-end system back that when bringing this one around, it gives you a loop with your water on one end. If you gotta break the water, you still got water coming from another source.
That's what maintenance said, that it'd be worth, yeah, to keep that, yeah.
That's pretty much.
Pretty much it.
Thank you.
So, I think going back to what Mr. Smith said at the very beginning, this is a deduct of sixty thousand dollars, put everything together, but it's, but we're still paying out fifty-six thousand for the one point five inches of surface and include the striping, you know, that's a little over sixty thousand dollars, and still getting a sixty thousand dollar deduct for the project, so.
We like deducts.
Mr. Kazook said he likes deducts.
We like people.
I recommend approval of the proposal request number five for the Russell County Bus Garage and Fieldhouse Project as presented and authorize Superintendent Ford to complete the change order paperwork.
Motion.
Motion.
Mr. Selby? Second. Mr. Murray? Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item is proposal request number six, Russell County Bus Garage and Fieldhouse, Bus Garage HVAC Edition.
So, we first started talking about this, I'll be the, I did not think that we would get a quote this good. And I know it's a lot, but consider that building and what you have to cool, we were very pleased with that quote, weren't we, Mr. Cheek?
I think it could be two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's a hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. And we all know there'll never be a cheaper time to put air conditioning in a building than when you're building it. You know, the cost is always gonna, gonna, gonna go up. So, this, this is what this proposal request addresses and I'll let Mr. Cheek address it.
In the original design, the direction was given just to do heating only in the bus garage sections. And then the offices, admins, suite, conference room would all be heated and cooled. And then after we got up there, Mr. Ford, he said, hey, what would it look like to get cooling in the bus garage as well? That's what we threw out, we think that's just gonna be two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. We designed the cooler, went back to the drawing board, designed that section with cooling and then put that out for this proposal request and we're really pleased with it. This represents some deducts of taking out the heating only unit that we were gonna put in and replacing that with a unit outside that does heating and cooling. We've got some additional ductwork in there and then the electrical serving this unit is much higher load because it's got compression units that are doing cooling. That's pretty much it, it's pretty straightforward. We were pleased with that, with that pricing for sure.
I, I did note, Mr. Cheek, and I'll, I'll bring it up now, that, that you did tell me that CMGA would not have a design fee because of proposal request number one, that they waived that. So, appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
So, they did that design work for that and they did not have a design fee with it. And to be honest, after we were into this and then talking to other people, I thought it was kinda pretty, that folks didn't put air conditioning in the bus garage just because of what you do up and down, but then after talking to some people and other school superintendents, and they are doing that. It's, they are putting air conditioning in. So, working with some of these other items and reducing some costs and going back to that contingency fund, this is an item, I think, you know, we're not doing it. That bus garage is gonna be there for a long time, right?
Many summers like this.
Many, many summers like this, I don't know what, any air conditioner could keep up with a summer like now.
Why would anybody design one without air?
Oh, that's right. Well, I think that was some of our, our direction because we were even on site. I know, I think Ben was and I know Larry was, because we talked about the, the placement of it to get the prevailing winds when it was up there. And so, we had all those conversations initially. Of course, like I said, we was trying to work off of, off of a tight budget at the very beginning during the design phase. So, I was very pleased with what this price came in, again, using the existing folks that have the bids currently to do this, to do this work. So, any other questions or anybody for the team?
Motion.
Second.
Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Can we just throw those in the board?
Next item on the agenda is proposal request number seven, Russell County Bus Garage and Fieldhouse Site Revisions Deduct.
So, again, this is some work at the bus garage and it's another deduct. I don't know, who, who are you gonna talk about?
Actually, this is not messed up, PR5, I'll take PR7. What I saw about PR5, that was actually where we changed pipe and stuff in here. When we moved the building a hundred and twenty-six foot.
This is all those drains on this one.
Yeah, we, we deleted a bunch of pipe and stuff down here and I got the two reversed. But that was where we done stuff back here on PR5, where we deleted pipe and moved the building a hundred and twenty-six feet. First item on PR7 is where we done away with all the fabric drains, except for the bus garage, that's the big one.
So, as you come up that road going to the bus garage, it's the area to the right, that's not gonna be developed. That, we initially had that in there as a, as an alternate and it came in very high on the, on the initial bid, but some of the drains and stuff were still there.
Try to keep the area dry so that they wouldn't be building on it, but they can still use it for something, but that's just.
I mean, it was great for the land, it was, it was great site development.
I'd say it's dry now, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure it's dry now.
Yeah. But actually, what we've done for the area also is, one day, Mr. Ford come up and he had the idea, you know, that he had his tennis coach with him or his soccer coach, we maybe wanna build another soccer field. And I just wanna say this, explain a little bit how Scott Murphy worked with it. Scott Murphy had the dirt and stuff anyway, so, and we debated it for, you know, a little while, that we're gonna be able to build a soccer field, but it's gonna be on a lot of slope and stuff. And I called Ben and.
This is for the youth up there, Russell.
They got together on this and stuff, we actually, the road going back, we were supposed to raise that road about six and a white top and stuff, approximately a foot. So, Ben and them, or the folks that work with them and stuff, they done a regrade. If you go back there now, you'll see the road about three foot higher or a little more than existing. And it drops off on that side. And what that does is if you ever decide that you want to come in there and develop that for a playground or whatever, you've got three foot of dirt that you can add to it or whatever, you're gonna be able to stabilize that a whole lot. Just didn't add dirt to it, so that's how we stabilize some of the rest of it. Anyway, you've got seventeen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollar deduct for material, another ten thousand, one sixty-five for labor and then six thousand for equipment. That was just that fabric range system down there that we felt like is, we needed the money worse than we need to rest it down. Then we changed the fence along the road. The fence, to begin with, did cut the soccer field right square down the middle. We moved that approximately forty feet, I guess, we're located four foot off the edge of the road and we're changing from six foot high fence down to four because they use that road back through their lots, that monster and stuff, and all the plant soccer, it's gonna be the one usable for two sites now.
So, it's, it's another deduct of thirty-five thousand dollars on this one. So, I recommend approval of proposal request number seven for the Russell County Bus Garage and Fieldhouse Project as presented. Authorize Superintendent Ford to complete the change order paperwork.
Joy? Second. Mr. Murray? Mr. Murray, second. Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
This is another deduct?
This is another deduct. Ms. Brenda, if we keep it up, they'll be paying us, won't they?
I am.
Like we're going.
Next item on the agenda, proposal request number eight, Russell County Bus Garage and Fieldhouse, twelve-inch concrete masonry unit, CMU at bus garage, deduct.
So, this is, as, as the agenda says, to delete the concrete masonry unit, the CMU at the, at the bus garage and some of the ceiling, the stud wall to the ceiling. So, I'll let Larry, whomever's gonna.
So, this, originally in the project, this was a full height concrete masonry block wall that went from the ground all the way up to the underside of the roof structure at the bus garage. It's the wall that separates the office area from the bus garage. It's a Cadillac, but a Chevrolet would probably work just as well, as Mr. Ford indicated earlier.
Careful.
So, we asked, so we priced out changing that, getting a credit back for that masonry instead of doing six-inch metal stud. We'll do high-impact gypsum board up to eight feet above and then regular gypsum board above that. So, it'll have soundback insulation, full height, to keep the sound separation between the garage and the offices. But it is, it is a significant credit of thirty thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents.
There it is.
Oh, my gosh.
My second. Oh, there it is.
Ms. Joy made a motion and Ms. Brenda seconded.
Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
They're, they're hollering if you're not.
Next item on the agenda is proposal request number nine, Russell County Bus Garage, Fieldhouse Unit Price to Move Excess Soil.
So, as we've been up there at the bus garage and they're doing all that, the civil work with the, with the ground, we've got a lot of good topsoil up there. Our practice field at the, that's built behind the visitor locker room there, needs four or five more inches of, of topsoil on it in a, in a very big way. So, we'd ask them to give us a price while we've got it and to bring it in and stockpile it, because we can't spread it right now because they're, we're still using it and for practice and stuff this fall. But they would bring that in and stockpile it there, uh, from Russell Springs, bring our own soil, move it up here. And then the other part is to move the soil, kinda, Mr. Larry, you could talk through that better at the bus garage on moving that soil on over there to the, to the south.
Actually, eleven dollars, sixty cents yard, that's the haul of the dirt in there, like you said, stockpiling it. And we'd estimate, I think, somewhere eight hundred to a thousand yard, which is gonna be probably a bit of that dollar. But it'll, thank you very much. Football field, practical football field, we can go grass on it. And Coach said the other day that it's so hard now, I think we play tap basketball, I think I'll play tap football around base. And the other, a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour, that's for big five dozer. And when you did take the alternate up there to develop the whole property to the south to the bus garage, when you get down to where it is with the road right now, we're supposed to cut a drainage ditch around it and you'll have a big hump there. Once we get done with the initial work and we're practically there, they are on the dirt work, we'd estimated it'd probably take, it would take somewhere from eighty to a hundred hours, something over, to move that dirt and blend everything in from the bank, from Thomas's zones down and to the south side of the road. Where I'm talking about, you have a three-foot drop now. It was planted in, make it a little more like a yard, but it come down here, it's gonna be long. And what that does too is that'll get us down and get the, a lot of the trash and stuff off the top and have it for us to develop if you wanna build something else in there later on. It'll take a lot of this to get anything. I forget everybody coming up on the seven.
We decided.
It's gonna be looking in the direction.
Yep.
Yeah, based upon how much time it actually does take. So, very similar to how we did the one, proposal request number two on the time and material. But a good estimate for both of these would be around twenty thousand dollars, would, would get them both done, talking with Scott Murphy and, and the prices and how much, how many inches of topsoil that we need to put on this practice football field back here. I recommend approval of proposal request number nine for the Russell County Bus Garage and Fieldhouse Project as presented. Authorize Superintendent Ford to complete the change order paperwork.
Motion.
Second. Mr. Murray? Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
We see a line in the zone.
I'm gonna take a break. Y'all can carry on about, we're waiting.
I'm glad you added this since running there.
I'm sorry.
I'm glad you added twenty in there. We did one.
Oh, get rid of all those buildings?
I mean, that, that round is in a way more.
I mean, store, I mean, it's that store.
Well, they're, for one thing, utility haul, Ms. Joy. I mean, the amount that they're.
Are y'all gone? Tell he's dismissed.
You're welcome.
Thank you all. Be careful. I'm with Larry trying to speak now. Why am I here? It's grabbing her.
Thank you all. Thank you all. No, I'm good. We can get together on the paperwork.
Why?
Thank you all. I will, he's getting relieved though, but I was gonna mention him at this next one because when we do this advertise for bids, Jonathan said they'll do the bid package and won't charge the board anything.
Yeah, right. I don't people like Jonathan.
Ms. Carol said you all are paying for those short board meetings tonight.
Yeah. Get your money worth it.
Yeah. Twenty-six minute one. Yeah. What about one? What? Eight minutes. Eight minutes.
But we, we, Ms. Joy, you're talking about these buildings. They'll pay for themselves being gone and utility cost. Of course, you know, with, with the ACE and everything that you all done.
Yes.
Over there, so we've got, and.
Next item on the agenda is BG one auxiliary building demolition advertised for bids.
So, attached is a BG one for the buildings located behind Russell County Middle School that are proposed for demolition. So, I've attached a picture to your staff note, number, the, the round one there is the old band room. And then number two and number three were old industrial arts and ag buildings when the high school was here. Most recently, they have been special ed offices, gift and talented offices, and the Laker Success Academy. Of course, when you all, we got the ACE renovated and all those, so folks have been relocated. And number four has just, it's been the old storage building with junk in it for years. At one point, years, years ago, it was a weight room and at one point, they told me it was a greenhouse.
It's a greenhouse.
Yeah, so you remember that, Ms. Selby?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a greenhouse and then the weight room.
Okay.
In the same building?
No.
No, greenhouse first.
There's some elevation changes there, too.
Greenhouse was there first and then it was turned into the football weight room.
Yeah.
And it was just wet in there as soon.
Oh, boy, I can only imagine. And then number five is the existing maintenance building and they, they will go, when we're ready for them to, they will go into the building that's directly behind the ACE with what was Mr. Sloan and Mr. Moke's classrooms. So, they've got garage doors.
What's the pantry?
It, the pantry now is being moved to the very front building, right out here, at the very corner, so it's easier for parents to get to, too, in the same building that the Laker Success Academy, the very front building. Then we got the ACE and then we'll have the maintenance building. So, when that is gone, all of that area will be cleaned up nice for parking with your all's approval, one, two, three, and four. They will demo the slabs and then fill it back in for dense grade and then that will position us very well when we do get to start on the middle school project. But it, they are listed on our district facility plan, so they are, so a BG one is required. Of course, we'll need to solicit bids, but I've worked with the company to give me the cost estimates. And I, as Jonathan was leaving there, I noted that Brantcombe Construction has agreed, they're gonna prepare the bid package for the board at no cost. And then we will just advertise for that because there's legal things that have to be put in the bid package and Jonathan said he would take care of that for us and they would give them to us. And then I just noted that, that there's no construction management or architectural services are involved nor are they required. And I've talked to the state about that and I've talked to Mr. Webb, our local building inspector. They don't currently house anybody, they're not attached to any structures and so we don't have to have any engineer or architect involved. We just really need somebody to come in and tear them down, dispose of them properly and fill them back in with dense grade is what this, is what this calls for now. So, got eighty thousand five hundred dollars with eighty thousand being called for, for the cost and five hundred dollars for advertisement for that. And that is also with capital outlay funds that we can use. Again, we'll pay for that in utility cost in no time. The old band room, currently middle school for this year, we put them on a bus and they're going, actually going to the high school and getting to use the high school band room at that time. The middle school band room is in really bad shape, structurally and otherwise, and it's, it's, it's just old and worn out. So, they're, they're actually getting, go to the high school, make use of that space. That's working out great and as soon as everything's out, we've got everything sorted, we can. It is a dangerous spot.
Oh.
For traffic, it's a very dangerous spot for traffic.
I don't like the margin that's there.
Okay.
I'll say.
And I'll say yes.
Vote.
Okay. Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
I believe they're on autopilot.
I bet so.
There is an auto.
Oh, no. You could've brought that up all the way.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, agenda is twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six tax rates, proposal tax rate reduction for real estate, personal property, tangible, motor vehicle, watercraft, and utility tax rates unchanged.
So, I know everybody's always happy when we can put in there a, a decrease and, and just to remind the public that has been a decrease now for a few years. Property evaluations have went up and it's allowed the board to decrease the tax rate and still generate some additional funds for the school district. Of course, this is required by KRS one sixty dot four seventy, requires local board of education to set tax rates within forty-five days of receiving certified property assessments. We received the attached rate reports on August the seventh, August seventh, twenty twenty-five. Our current tax rates are as follow, fifty point one cents for real estates, for real estate, fifty-one point one cents for tangible personal property, fifty-two point two cents for motor vehicle, watercraft, and three percent for utilities. So, I'm proposing that we reduce the real estate tax rate to forty-nine point nine per cent for one hundred of assessed value and that will include a point three cents to allow for exonerations and maintain the tangible personal property tax rates at fifty-one point one, motor vehicle, watercraft at fifty-two point two, and the utility tax rate at three percent. And I've just noted again that this does not require a public hearing and increasing the property evaluations, increased property evaluations in Russell County allows us to reduce the tax rates while still generating that additional revenue. I thought Mr. Popwell done a good job on WJRS last week talking about property evaluations and, and how they, how much they went up just at the time that he's been in office. It was a, it was, I text him, it was a very educational segment on that. So, all the tax reports are attached for your review and.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Anytime you knock nothing down, I'm bored.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is contracts, memorandums, agreement.
We have the memorandum of agreement for the grandparents support group. Ms. Sherri Coffey, Youth Service Center Director, coordinates that with the Lake Cumberland Area Development District, has those meetings, they're, they're great, she does great work with that group. Green County Board of Education, they are independent testing for our CDL license to operate a school bus. Youth Villages Behavioral Health Services, SAFY for Behavioral Health Services, Adanta Group for Behavioral Health Services, and Helping Others Pursue Excellence or Hope Behavioral Health Services. Again, those last four are ones that we have, the mental health agencies that come in and provide services for our students with agreements and Ms. Dameron always vets those. So, I recommend approval of the contracts or memorandums of agreement that's been approved by the board attorney.
Motion.
Second. Second. Second, Julie. Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is out of state and/or overnight trips.
On September twenty twenty twenty-five, Gerald TC to Anderson County High School in Clinton, Tennessee. October the second through the eighth, Russell County High School volleyball team tournament in Fort Walton Beach, Destin, Florida. May fourth through the eighth, seniors explorer senior trip in New York City, New York. So, I recommend approval of out of state and/or overnight trips as presented.
Motion.
Mr. Selby? Second. Mr. Murray? Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is schoolwide fundraiser.
Russell Springs Elementary School, the chocolate bar sales, September the second through the twelfth, Salem, for Salem blankets on August seventh.
August.
This is retroactive. And August the thirtieth for popcorn sales and the middle school for this school year that we do, and the PTL will be doing daily school approved snacks and drinks. And basketball season, they'll be running the concession snacks and drinks and then they did t-shirt sales on August eleventh. Conclude with that. So, I recommend approval of the schoolwide fundraiser as presented.
She was.
Mr. Joy, vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is cancel September regular meeting, schedule special meeting, KSBA regional meeting conflict.
So, the regular meeting, the Kentucky School Board Association is scheduled for Monday, September fifteenth. That, we need to cancel the meeting for a couple of reasons. That's Mr. Murray's birthday, so he, he, he might be out having a birthday party. And secondly, that's at the, that's the same night as the Kentucky School Boards Association and Regional Meeting in Campbellfield. So, we don't typically, they don't release those dates when we set our school board meetings, but I think historically, if they follow through that, Ms. Carol and I've talked about that, we'll, we'll try to account for that in January when we approve our next round of school board meetings, because it seems like it's been that third Monday for the past few years, so maybe it'll be, again, that we can accommodate for that. So, I do recommend canceling the September regular school board meeting so we can all attend that and scheduling a special call board meeting. So, if we cancel that meeting, obviously, it's a special call board meeting and that's at your, your discretion. We are gonna, as Allison said, we will open up bids on September the sixteenth. So, she will need a few days, if we try to accommodate the bid opening for the band project with this date, you know, she'll need a few days to, to go through the bids, contract, contact the bidders and, and things like that. So, sometime after the sixteenth is what I would recommend, or maybe even into that following week so that we could.
Or the twenty-ninth.
I.
Twenty-second.
Or the twenty-second?
Yeah.
Twenty-ninth is two weeks away.
Yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-second would be okay.
Okay.
Whatever date and time you all choose.
Twenty seconds, fine, for me.
Have it at the same time in the evening? Is that good? Okay. All right. So, I recommend we cancel the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, Russell County Board of Education regular meeting and schedule a special call meeting, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, at five o'clock PM.
Motion?
Vote.
Mr. Selby? Second. Mr. Murray? Vote?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Selby?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazook?
Yes.
Okay, next, next item on the agenda is data security.
Seven oh two KAR one colon one seventy requires the district to review data security and breach notification best practice guide and acknowledge such in a public meeting prior to the August thirty-first of each year. And there's a link to the guide and noted that Mr. Bell will be here and there's no action required, it's informational.
Yeah, it's the same thing basically we've had in the last several years. The only thing, still have a whole lot of guidance on yet is that the Senate Bill eighty-one changes this with that, how we've got to report and those type of things, but you really think me else has got to say?
One thing I'll note that really keeps the IT busy is just the number of phishing attempts that, that is, is within the district all the time.
Number one?
Phishing attempts, where hoax emails, where they'll, they'll, they'll be an email going out that says, hey, click here to reset your account or click here to update your benefits or you need, your direct deposit is expired, click here, you know, all those types of things. So, I just always, we, we all need to be vigilant as individuals, but certainly within the school district, because they're really crafty and they will, you know.
Get in there every day.
They'll take my email and logo and everything and, and send out an email and where it looks like it's coming from the superintendent. It's just, it's just crazy.
I got, I got one of them.
Did you? Yeah, yeah.
But I didn't accept it, did I?
No, I'm glad you didn't.
Anything else, Mr. Bell?
Next item on the agenda is personnel reports.
Shayna Thomas, Russell Springs Elementary School, hired library media specialist. Lindsay Williams, Russell Springs Elementary School, resigned as library media specialist. Angela Jones, James Elementary School, hired MSD assistant. Cassie Sterns, hired James Elementary School custodian. Albert Beatty, Salem Elementary School, resigned custodian. Ellie Flanagan, Salem Elementary School, hired instructional assistant. Mr. Beatty is a food service, not custodian there.
I'm sorry.
That's no problem. Angela Robertson, Russell County Middle School, retiring as MSD teacher. James Blake Melton, Russell County Middle School, hired assistant baseball coach. Bobby Emerson, Russell County Middle School, hired exceptional education teacher, LBD. Mackenzie Coffey, Russell County Middle School, hired as the cheer coach. Mackenzie Hadley, Russell County Middle School, hired MSD instructional assistant. Bobby Emerson, Russell County Middle School, hired as an assistant cheer coach.